All right, you're all set.
Good to go?
Yep.
Planning Board is now in session. It's Monday, April 12th, 7:00 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order of suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 3818, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website at www.southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting or participate in the public hearing may do so in the following manner. Again, www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. We'll move on to the first item of our agenda tonight, which is discussion item, the Master Plan Committee update. Mrs. Latrell.
Thank you. The Master Plan Committee met last Wednesday. We reviewed the housing chapter, which has been updated by Tom Markelier and in no small part by Sarah. They did a really great job. The, all of our goals and recommendations are on the planning board, in the planning board drop box under the master plan, looking from feedback from this board, make sure we're headed in the right direction. We haven't forgotten anything, or there's not something offensive in there. And our next meeting is May 12th, I think. And that's, that's it.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is 7:05 PM, public hearing, 96 Mount Vickery Road, definitive subdivision plan approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mills?
I'm going to recuse myself due to a conflict.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This public hearing is continued from December 14th, January 11th, February 8th, February 22nd, March 8th, and March 29th. It's also a continued public hearing for the lower impact development special permit. That public hearing is continued also from those same dates. We'll ask the town planner to give us an update and what we're hoping to do during this public, continued public hearing tonight.
Sure. First of all, I want to just point out that due to Dawn, yours and Jesse Stein's absent at, absence at the March 29th public hearings, that both of you have submitted signed Mullins forms indicating that you reviewed the information for the public hearings this evening. And those forms were filed with the town clerk on Friday and today as a requirement so that both of you can continue to participate in the deliberation and the action for those public hearings. All right. That being said, since the last meeting, the draft decisions that were, that we put together that were previously reviewed by the applicant and the planning board and distributed to them, they were also submitted to town council for review, and he came back with some very minor feedback, which I can go over as soon as we start looking at the decisions. And a couple of things I just wanted to point out since the last meeting, I did correspond with the fire department and the police department regarding the name of the roadway, and both of them were, both chiefs were on board with Lamson Drive. No problem with that. I received an email just a little while ago from Open Space Preservation Commission Committee, Commission? Commission, sorry. I don't make that mistake, from Freddie Gillespie. And the two comments that they had, I think were primarily already included in the conditions of the draft decision. So when we get to those, I'll point out what those two are. And to just be clear, Fussin O'Neil's review from March 2nd, that was their third review, is being considered as their final review. Only items left were at the discretion of the planning board in the form of waivers, et cetera, or conditions of approval. And that brings us to tonight, Planning Board meeting number seven. Here we are.
Very good. Good evening, Michael. Nathan? Welcome back. Do you want to start us off, Nathan?
Yeah, absolutely. One moment here, and I will. Could I get just screen share permission? There we go. Thank you.
All set.
Just let me know if anybody can't see that. Just for the record, Nathan Mahoney with Bowler Engineering and Mike Barlini with Barlini Properties. Since the last meeting, we had, you know, a great meeting with the board. Last time we were left with the kind of a handful of minor items to address, each of which I'll just touch very briefly on this evening, kind of keep the presentation short here. The most important of those were having the DPW look at the plans relative to the two waiver requests for the roadway. Those two being the use of curbing along the side of the road. In lieu of doing that, we've got the roadside swale for the LID technique. And then the second being the implementation of the bio retention area in the center of the cul-de-sac. DPW has reviewed the plans, and they have provided written correspondence to Takri, and I believe stating that they are acceptable to both waivers as requested and both items on the plans as designed. We've also received an updated letter from the fire department relative to specifically hydrant spacing on the roadway. The plans that are current and as submitted are in compliance with all items that are requested from the fire department. And the plans were also updated to address some minor comments from the board at the last meeting, you know, including, you know, two to one replacement of trees to be saved if they are removed during construction. Just some clarification to retention of trees to be, remain along the eastern stone wall and some addition of some details into the plan set. And then outside of that, there was an additional item from the Open Space Commission to extend and add the New England Conservation and the New England Wildflower Seed Mixes to the proposed basin at the rear of the site. That has been done incorporated into the plans as well. And then two items really outside of the, the plans in specific, on a quick update. The first being, we had a request for the construction of, excuse me, a waiver request to not construct sidewalks on the roadway. It's kind of after further discussion and review with the planner, the road is actually classified as a minor residential street, just because of the number of lots that it serves. It's only six lots. And that classification does not require the construction of a sidewalk. So we've actually, you know, in our most recent letter said that we do not need or are not requesting that waiver anymore from the subdivision regulations. And the second one, after further consideration, the applicant is withdrawing the request to extend that two-year timeframe noted in the subdivision application to three years. And they'll comply with the two-year commitment that's noted in the application. So that's short update for tonight. Happy to turn it back over to the board. Answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Thank you. Open up to the board, Mr. Stein. Questions, comments?
I do not have any at this time.
Mrs. Latrell.
First, I'd like to acknowledge that town council thanked the town planner in the planning department for their very concise decisions. And I know that town council is not free with his compliments, so I thought that should be mentioned. Were the, did the butters that requested the screening, are they aware of what's being proposed and have they agreed to that?
I believe that Mike has had discussions with you about a spell to location and type of screening. Yes.
Okay. And there's a request for a waiver for iron pins instead of the concrete bounds? How how did the iron rods stay in place? I've had bad experiences with the iron rods put in by my surveyor being yanked out by other surveyors.
So the request, the delineation for the right of way for the roadway, the points of curvature, points of tendency, everything that's related to the physical dimension of the road will still be the granite or concrete bounds markers. The iron rod is for the delineation of the property corners for each individual lot, just for clarification. And, I mean, in my experience, the surveyors, when they set the rods, they're set a few feet into the ground with only about the top half inch exposed. They make for better identification on individual property corners. They tend to get less tendency to get buried, covered, you know, in mulch, landscaping, other things that homeowners might do. A little bit easier to find in future reconnaissance for homeowners and surveyors when they're using a metal detector and so forth. So that is the thought behind them. But generally, they're set a few feet into the ground. They're pretty difficult to yank out unless somebody's put some good work at it, or, you know, for, you know, for malicious purposes, if a homeowner doesn't want it there anymore, trying to pull it out. But if they're going to that extent, they'll, they'll try to pull out, you know, almost anything that's there. So.
Okay. And I had just one comment on the conditions. Number seven, could we put in native species trees? Where it's the replace with two trees, put in native species trees?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. And it does say on the list.
I think they're both exactly the same, so. Number seven is vegetative screening selected from approved plant list. So you wanted to say native species?
So maybe I, maybe I read it. So it's where the, where it refers to if the trees that are slated to be to remain, if they have to be removed, they'll be replaced.
Let me look. Oh, number eight, any tree listed to remain within the limits of work, 12 inch or greater in diameter that is removed shall be replaced with two trees of four inch caliper or more. Proposed trees or replacement trees that die within one year of planting shall be replaced. So that's where you want the native.
The native species, yeah.
In the number eight, Nathan.
So you just, are you gonna just put in the same selected from approved plant list? Is that?
That'll work too. Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Houlihan.
Thank you. Thanks for all of the work. And I just had one question. So I know in our March 8th meeting, we'd asked for a truck turning sketch ahead of the next, this meeting. And it said in the letter dated March 19th that we received from you, Nathaniel, that there was an addition of a turning movement exhibit to show the cul-de-sac accommodates the ASH2-BUS45 design standard. And I just didn't see that in my, is that in our? I just played it in my, oh.
I just changed the page.
Okay.
Bottom here. Correct.
Perfect. That was all that I had. Thank you.
Thank you. So to be sure, the plan, the latest plan, the plan that you want the planning board to approve is the one that's, the latest revision is 31721 on sheet C101, cover sheet. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'll ask the if there's any questions or comments from the public.
I do not see any hands raised. Oh, Fred, hold on one second. Freddie, just raise your hand. Oh, yes. There was an additional comment to wildlife seeding.
Yes. I'm Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. And we had a meeting the end of March. And Michael was there as well, representing the proponent. And we were in agreement on the two trees for replacing any tree that comes down but at four caliper instead of the three that's in the required for planting in the zoning code, as well as he agreed to use a wildflower seeding mix. I think that got into the decision.
Yes, it did, Freddie.
I don't need any specifics unless it's
Well, I just want to make
Less than what we agreed to.
Okay. It is a two to one replacement with four inch caliper. The only thing that's not included, Nathan, is in condition number 15. No, I'm sorry. Where is it here? Oh, yeah. Condition number eight. Freddie, for your reference, condition eight indicates any tree listed to remain within the limits of work, 12 inches or greater, and that is removed shall be replaced with two trees of four inch caliper or more. And that with the addition that's selected from the approved plant list. And then there is a just, oh, yeah. Condition number six, New England Conservation Wildlife Seed Mix and Wildflower Mix shall be extended into the infiltration basin and sides of the basin. I believe your comment had an additional requirement of like 25%.
It was a minute. A minimum of 25% of the wildflower mix to the conservation mix. Is, is that your memory, Michael? Yeah. I'm sorry. Can I ask him? Sorry. Through the chair.
Of course, yep.
Yeah, I think we're for every, we're supposed to put a 25 to 75% mix. Where the conservation goes, we're supposed to put a 25% wildflower.
Seed mix from New England Wetland Plants, even though it's not a wetland plant seed mix. That's the name of the company. Can that just be added in there easily?
Mike, are you in agreement with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And me, and Freddie, you said, so I have New England Conservation Wildlife Seed Mix and Wildflower Mix. I have the ratio. I just, you mentioned something about wetland. Which one does that apply to?
The company is New England Wetland Plants. Not all New England wildflower mixes from different companies are acceptable. Because, believe it or not, they don't always include native plants. So this is one company that does.
Yeah. So just the, the two, the two seed mixes that are on there are correct, but they come from the company New England Wetland Plants. So there's no
Got it. Okay.
Thank you. And, and thank you, Michael. It was a very cooperative process from the Open Space Preservation Commission standpoint.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Are we able to put the list of the waivers, the requested waivers on the screen?
Yeah. One second. You might want to start with the definitive subdivision, Sarah.
Sure.
The decisions have different waivers. The conditions are the same in both decisions, but the waivers are different. And they're on page three. There we go. A little further. There you go.
So let's refresh ourselves, or at least refresh me. Have we voted on any of the waivers?
I don't believe so.
I think you're right. I don't recall that either. So let's go to waiver request number one.
Sarah, can you scroll down to page three? It jumped back. I jumped forward.
I'm is it slow?
I started there they are. Little higher. There it is.
Okay, this is about the circular turnaround and the pavement radius, so on. Would, is there any discussion on this, or are you ready to make a motion to grant this waiver? Mr. Stein?
Some moved to grant the waiver.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to waive the as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to grant? Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the second one here, which has to do with the rolled by two minutes curbing or cape card berm. And we're waiving part of that in order to accommodate the new swale next to the roadway. Any discussion or comments regarding waiving those waiving the berms, the berms? Hearing none, entertain a motion to to waive the berms. Mr. Stein?
Yep, some moved as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to the next one, which has to do with the granite or reinforced concrete monuments to be established, denoting the intersection of the subdivision boundaries and also the changes in directions within, at each lot. The request for iron rods. I am also with Mrs. Latrell on this one in that iron rods are not, not really acceptable. The reinforced concrete monuments, those would have a rebar in, in the concrete monument. And I believe those monuments, I think the dimensions are at least four inches by four inches, maybe bigger. And so the granite or the reinforced concrete, reinforced concrete would allow the metal detector to find them. So I am not in favor of granting this waiver. And I think we've pretty been, the planning board's been pretty consistent in staying away from just the metal rods. Any other board members want to speak to this? So we would entertain a motion to grant the waiver. And if the motion doesn't carry, then the original requirement would stand. Mr. Stein?
Does the proponent want to amend the waiver request in any way?
And I just want to clarify. I think, Jesse, you're asking that because the way the waiver is written in the decision, in the draft decision, it's talking about granite or reinforced concrete monuments not only along the roadway, right of way for a street that will eventually become public, but also for all angle points and points of curvature or tendency on the subdivision street right away, but also for the corner points of the lots, the corners and changes in direction of the boundaries of each lot. Just so it's very clear. We're talking about all, all the bounds and monuments required would be granite or concrete.
Karina, I believe Nathaniel earlier, 10 minutes earlier, confirmed that the, the bounds at the roadway would be granite.
Correct.
This waiver does not include that. It only includes the non, the boundaries not at the public way.
Right. So the waiver, if you're looking at the document on the screen, the last sentence in the middle of the paragraph says reinforced concrete bounds are required at the corner points of the boundaries of the subdivision and at corners and the changes in direction of the boundaries of each lot. So Dawn, just correct me if I'm wrong, but it's those particular monuments or bounds that the applicant was requesting would be iron rods.
That's fine. What my understanding would be that we would have granite where the property lines intersect with the public way. And we would have either granite or reinforced concrete and all others. No iron rods anywhere.
So say that one more time. The first part was no iron rods. You said at the, at the intersection of the property lines and the public right of way.
Granite.
Would be granite. And everywhere else would be granite or concrete, reinforced concrete.
Yes.
As required in that section 244-26.
Yes.
All right. I just wanted that to be crystal clear.
If, if I may, understanding the discussion points and everything that's going back and forth, there is quite an extensive portion of the rear of the properties for lots one through five. In particular, the back line where bounds would need to be set within wetland areas because of the wetland delineation, would it be possible to have that waiver request so that if the monuments fall on those back property lines within wetlands, that those could be iron rods in lieu of digging up the wetland area to install the bounds?
I think we went through this in at least one or two recent subdivisions that involved wetlands. And it was, I'd have to be refreshed on it, but it's exact, the reason for these is to make it not necessarily easy to install, but to make them easy to be found so that the homeowners know where the property, where their property is. And if it, if it involves having to put it in a wetland or on a piece of ledge, it's important that the emphasis is on the ability of the homeowner and the, and the next door neighbors or neighbor to see it, know where it is, and, and find it so that people know where their property is.
No, I understood my comment was more of just trying to minimize the disturbance and work in the wetland area itself. But, but point taken.
Jesse, did you have? Jesse, did you have a question? Was your question?
No, I guess we're just going to proceed with, um, making the motion, uh, to grant the wa- the waiver, um, for, uh, I believe it was concrete bounds, as written.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made in second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Morris opposed?
Uh, Stein opposed.
Latrell opposed.
Houlihan opposed.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next one. Can you scroll down a little bit, uh, Sarah?
I think that's it. There's just three waivers.
Oh, just the three, okay.
The lid has separate waivers.
Does the board want to go over and look at those, or do we want to finish up with, uh, the, um?
Definitive.
The, the definitive, uh, plan.
I'd be okay with doing the waivers for the lid now.
Can you do that, Sarah?
I, yep, I, let me just, uh, I'm just gonna stop cheering for a second, and then we'll share the other.
Those will be on page four.
So, I guess just loading up here. One more time. Oh. Just came up.
It's coming. Your connection must just be a little slow.
Yeah, I guess it is tonight. Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Oh, here it comes.
More, more page down.
Okay.
The town is getting an IT director on the twentieth, so we'll have some more support.
Do you know if the IT director is from Western Mass?
Uh, I don't think.
For those who don't know, Sarah is, um, working from, uh, the other side of the Berkshire's tonight.
I am. I am in the Berkshires.
It might be because you're loading it from the Dropbox, Sarah. If you go to the project, the server, uh, I noticed that the Dropbox was loading really slow this afternoon.
Yeah, uh, typically the Dropbox is where I have a better connection from home.
Okay.
Um, you know, it's usually where I up, you know, um, share stuff from. So, looks like.
If you want me to pull it up.
Yeah, I was just gonna say one of us.
Let me stop, so I'm not keeping everybody. Thank you.
Let me know when it's.
There we go. It's up, and you just need page four. There we go.
So, the first waiver, uh, request has to do with the roof gardens, mended soils, permeable pavement. Any discussion regarding the waiver of those parts of the, uh, lid, section?
Yeah.
Hearing none, would entertain a motion to, um, grant this waiver?
So moved, as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Move on to the next one, which has to do with, um, waiving the rules and regulations for, uh, top, oops, I mean, top, uh, gr- topography reference to NGVD nineteen twenty-nine. That's an old standard, which we probably should, um, extract from the rules at some point. Any discussion regarding waiving that requirement? Hearing none, would entertain a motion to grant the waiver?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. We'll move on to the next one, which has to do with waiving contours of the groundwater elevation. Again, uh, I think we had discussions about this, uh, way at the very early beginning of the, uh, subdivision, uh, plans. Is there any questions or comments, uh, regarding this waiver? Hearing none, would be appropriate to entertain a motion to grant the waiver?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Uh, Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good, thank you. And the last one is, um, the yearly hydrologic budget or water balance calculation. Um, again, uh, I think the proponents engineer spent some pretty quality time with us and the public, um, regarding, uh, stormwater recharge. Uh, so, um, any, any discussion regarding, uh, the wavering, the waiving of this requirement? Hearing none, uh, would be appropriate to entertain a motion to grant the waiver?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Anything else on this, uh, Karina? We're all done with waivers on both?
Yes, the waivers are addressed.
Uh, nice job, uh, putting these all together between you and Sarah and Nathaniel. Um, what's next? The conditions? I know we talked, we've been, earlier talked about conditions. Did we cover all of the conditions?
Um, what I'd like to do is just point out, um, there's th- three small changes from town council, regarding more administrative aspects, so that, um, Nathan and Michael can be aware of what those comments were. Would you like me to just go through those?
Yep.
All right, so we received, um, legal opinion from town council on April ninth, and, um, one of the things is, um, under procedural history, item number three indicates the record owner of the property, and I had, um, taken that information, off the plans, I believe. Uh, however, town council provided me with a copy of a deed, book one five 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 six, page three eighty-five, where it references, um, instead of, um, N slash F lands of Albert E. Lamson and Lawrence E. Lamson the second, he wanted me to replace that with Albert E. Lamson and Lawrence E. Lamson, as joint tenants, and put the book and deed reference in that, item number three, at the very first page. So, it's just a technicality.
Everyone okay with that?
You good with that?
No concerns on my part.
Okay, um, the second part is, um, under the conditions, item number sixteen, um, which read that the special permit for lower impact development approval and conditions shall apply to owner and all successors. Town council indicated that it should state, special permit for lower impact development approval and conditions shall apply to all owners and all successors in title and ownership. So, um, the changes apply to all owners and all successors in title and ownership. And that was also, um, in the lid decision, because the conditions are the same, so both those conditions, number sixteen, would reflect that. And then the last thing is that, um, in paragraph number twenty-eight, uh, which references the homeowners association will be responsible for stormwater management system maintenance and, and associated infrastructure. Town council indicated, um, relative to this condition, number twenty-eight, to the homeowners association, uh, to be responsible for the O and M and long-term pollution prevention plan, um, suggests that the board gets additional information of the detail of the suggested homeowners association for responsibility and enforcement purposes. So, I think what town council is suggesting, that we get a copy of your home, draft homeowners association, and let the, um, planning board see that when, when you have that ready or at some date certain.
I, I believe that would be acceptable, but defer to Mike if he has any concerns.
I think that'd be fine. So, would you want it for, like, like the pre-construction meeting? Is that where you're?
Well, what happens is, w- we take a look at it to make sure that it includes, um, the language that's required for operating and maintaining that stormwater management system, because although it is by the homeowners association, it still has to continue to function and be maintained. We need evidence. So, I know that in the SWIP and the emergency response plan, no, the person responsible has to sign those documents to be fully executed. So, I think the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Don, I think the planning board would like to see a draft copy of the homeowners association. I'm just not sure when is the best time to, require that to be submitted. Would that be prior to construction, or at the pre, you know, at the pre-construction meeting? I'm just trying to think of the last one, um. I wasn't here for Isabella Estates when that got permitted, and I know for Chestnut Meadow on Chestnut Hill Road back in two thousand seventeen, I believe that was provided after the appeal period, but I'm not sure. I'd have to check on it.
I- i- if I, if I may, and I'm not sure what the board has done in the past, but the O and M plan specifies that during construction, um, the developer is responsible for the O and M, and then post-construction, when you get into occupancy and so forth, it's the homeowners association who takes it over and has responsibility. Um, so if I, my base is a suggestion that prior to first occupancy permit being issued, that, that be submitted and reviewed by the town prior to that point. But again, I don't know what the town might have done for precedent in the past, but that would be my suggestion.
I think you're right. Um, now that you're, you're jogging my memory here, I think it, it does tie to the occupancy permit in the past. So, through our permitting software, um, that's where I s- I, I see that document come in. So, yeah. I think that makes sense, that prior to issuing the, the first occupancy permit, um, we would have to add that into the language here, if, um, the board agrees to that or thinks differently.
Michael, are you okay with that?
Uh, yeah, I think we're fine with that.
Any questions or comments?
And will that be, it, will that be for the town planner, for me to review, or does the planning board want to see that, um, and discuss it at a meeting, or?
No, when you get it, you look at it.
Yeah.
Um, if you think it should, it, it should be, uh, sent to the planning board, you can send it to us.
Okay, only if there's an issue.
And then if we want to elevate it to a public meeting, we can do that, but starts with you.
Okay, sounds good. So, we'll add prior to occupancy, prior to first occupancy permit into that condition.
Everybody good with that?
I think Marnie has a question.
Don, just a quick question. So, just, uh, this is not really related to this, um, this applicant, but just, is this like the calendar field where the homeowners association was, was responsible for cleaning out the swale and that type of stuff? Is that what we're expecting? So, enforcement and responsibility is very clearly laid out in a homeowners association manual? Moving forward, we don't have an issue like we do at calendar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? So, we took care of waiver requests, we took care of, uh, town council's recommendations, and have we covered all of the conditions? I don't need to necessarily discuss each and every one, but, um, if we want to just put them on the screen and by exception.
Okay, I had a few highlighted, um, just to make sure that, um, the planning board honed in on those, that the, they were included.
So, what's up now? Is this the, um?
That's the waivers.
This is the, uh, sub, the subdivision, right?
Conditions start on, yes, page four. There they are.
Everyone good with number one? Number two is boilerplate. Number three, I think is pretty much boilerplate, except for the big yellow part. Do you want to speak to that at all, Karina?
Sure, that's what's known as the Northborough language. Um, that, um, time and time again, we have the request, from Open Space Preservation Commission, and often, uh, Mimi brings up this as well. Um, she's very knowledgeable about this, and, um, I just want to show that it is included. It's the standard language for protecting the open space, that it will be, um, continuously undisturbed in its natural condition, according to this language specifically.
Okay, let's keep moving. Number four, galvanized spikes, which we've been putting in, um, on all of our recent subdivisions. Any questions, comments on that? Number five, that's boilerplate. Number six, I think, uh, Freddie went over that. Although this shall be extended into the infiltration basin and sides of the basin. Everyone okay with that?
Right, and it's also going to specify, according to my note from, uh, Freddie Gillespie, a twenty-five to seventy-five percent ratio of the wildflower mix to the, uh, wildlife seed mix.
Okay, number seven, I think we touched on that earlier. Is this the one?
Yeah, sorry, I think it's, uh, it's twenty-five of the wildflower and seventy-five of the other one. All right, just making sure.
Yeah, I said it a little bit.
It's the New England wetland, uh, the, it's, that's, that's the manufacturer of the seed.
Yeah, I've just.
Right, twenty-five percent of wildflower to seventy-five percent of the, of the wild, of the conservation wildlife seed mix.
Correct. Sorry, I thought you sent it backwards, so I just.
I did a little bit. I did sort of. I said it kind of backwards. Sorry. Thanks. I did a little bit. I did sort of. I said it kind of backwards. Sorry. Thanks for pointing that out. Okay.
Number seven. Everyone okay with that one? Number eight.
We also discussed that, yeah.
Yeah, we discussed that.
From the selected approved plant list, selected from the approved plant list. Yeah.
And I think all the rest are, um. Are just common to subdivisions. Is that correct?
Yes, um, number twenty-four, um. I've been including that, uh, a site visit shall be requested and writing to the town planner and conducted during installation of infiltration. Structures to ensure proper source, um, that typically gets done by our engineering consultant during inspections during the subdivision. But I just didn't want it to be missed, so that's why that's highlighted. But that's it.
Keep, keep scrolling down, Sarah. Or are you doing this, Marnie?
No, it's me.
Okay.
And just to also point out that Mount Vickery is a scenic road in number twenty-seven. Uh, the condition and that if you do impact any stone walls or trees in the town right away. Um, that you'd have to get a, um. Planning board scenic road, stone wall or tree removal permit. That's kind of an oddball one too, not all of them are seen. And again, all these conditions are exactly the same in both decisions. So that there's no confusion in the future.
Are there any other areas, items? Questions, comments relative to the plans?
Yeah, Karina, um. Andrew Mills is listed as a yes vote on this draft. He's an abstention.
Yeah, those are highlighted. Thank you for pointing that out. I would have obviously seen that. So I'll put abstain on both of those. Thanks, Jesse.
Anything else? At this point in the, uh, public hearing, if there is nothing else from the proponent from the planning board. Or the public, then we would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. If that passes, then the next step would most likely be a motion to approve. The subdivision and grant the special permit for lower impact development. So we know the path forward. Are there any questions or comments from anyone public? On the board?
We have, uh, fifteen attendees at the moment. No one has their hands raised.
Okay. So I guess it's okay to say this in the public hearing. Um, that, um, in my opinion, um, Michael Bartolini. Could serve as a consultant to other, uh, developers. On how to, uh, coordinate and cooperate with the neighbors and the town departments. Uh, we got off to a bit of a bumpy start with this, but, um. It's really been, uh, uh, an outstanding, uh, effort. Um, and cooperation. And in my opinion, a really excellent project, uh, being proposed. So compliments to you, Michael. Um, and always welcome to, uh, come before the planning board. And then, um, town planner and I, we're both, uh, registered professional engineers. And to see, um, an engineer come before the planning board, and we see plenty of them. To see one, um, as professional as you, uh, Nathan is, uh, is really, uh, special. Um, you, uh, presented the information. You addressed all the concerns, highly professional, and I want to make sure that, uh. Then I guess myself as chairman compliment you on that and acknowledge your highly professional performance materials. And conduct. And, um, would always welcome you back as well. Open it up if anyone else has any more comment, comments. Uh, the complaint part of the, uh, hearing is over. Um, this is the, the compliment part. If not, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is the motion, uh, one motion to close each public hearing? Since technically there's two public hearings, one for the subdivision and one for the lead?
We could combine them as long as when we, uh, vote to, uh. Well, I guess. We would grant, uh, we would approve the subdivision and we would grant a special permit. So maybe those should be separate motions, uh, when we get to that. But a, a single motion to close both hearings would probably be okay.
Okay, so the motion is to close the public hearings for ninety-six Mount Vickery Road. Definitive subdivision plan approval and lower impact development special permit.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearings. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, public hearings are closed. Now we would, um. Entertain a motion to approve the definitive subdivision plan. Mr. Stein.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the definitive subdivision plan. Um, as we discussed and presented tonight with the conditions, the waivers and other things. Um, any discussion on, uh. Granting approval. Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, subdivision plan is approved. Next would be to entertain a motion to grant a special permit for lower impact development. Mr. Stein.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to, uh, grant a special permit for lower impact development for ninety-six Mount Vickery Road. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yeah.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Thank you all very much. Um, your next steps will be with, through the town planner. And, um. Look forward to, uh, working with you in the future.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for your time, Karina. I'll, I'll reach out to you. We can talk next steps on how to finalize everything out.
Super. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night. Okay, next item on the agenda is a. Public hearing for town meeting or an article to amend section one seventy-four dash ten site plan approval. This public hearing is continued from February twenty-second, March eighth and March twenty-ninth. We will ask the town planner to update us and then it would move on to, this is Latrell.
Okay. Take a quick peek here. So, um. Let's see, at the last planning board public hearing, um. Don Morris and Jesse Stein were absent, just pointing out again that both Don Morris and Jesse Stein. Provided Mullen forms, uh, that were filed with the town clerk. Um, indicating that they reviewed all the information from the public hearing that they did not attend. Um. Sarah and I, uh, took the opportunity, um. In looking through the site plan review, um. Draft by law amendment one last time, um, before this meeting. To make sure that there were any little quirky things, um. Um, before it goes to print. For the final, for the warrant, um, I don't know, Sarah, if you'd like to go through those changes. Or the revisions that we're proposing and we're hoping that the planning board. Um, either agrees or disagrees so that we can make these final edits and submit the draft. Warrant article based on tonight's feedback to, um, the town administrator. Um, for their board of selectmen review and for printing in the warrant. And just note that it can be, uh, amended on the floor at some point and the public hearing will stay open. But we do need to submit a draft. To the board of selectmen. Um. For a warrant to be printed. Sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
Oh, that's okay. I, my, my puppies are getting a little wild, so, g- thanks for giving me a second. Um, so, yeah, uh, Karina and I took a look at this again. Um, these, you know, edits are relatively minor and, and mostly administrative. We just wanted to make sure that everything was, uh, squared up to the, to the best of our ability before it went to print. Um, so here is the current language. Um, and I'm just gonna scroll down to our amendments which are highlighted in red. So, um, here we are at. Major plan review, so under two. Going down into C to C. Uh, what we added, uh, was just a line that indicated that suitable space. To record the action of the planning board, including signature lines shall be provided in each plan set. So again, it's just kind of a detail, uh, to make sure that the proponent knows exactly what's expected in those final plans. So that those lines are already there for, um, for the board signature.
And also it's a way for us to tell in the future what set is actually approved. It's a really nice thing to see those signatures on there and everyone knows that's the approved set.
It looks like my last page is not loading, of course.
It's trying.
It is trying. Let's see if we can.
While you get that to load, I just want to point out that, um, the board of selectmen, um. Did review this. Site plan approval, um, warrant article and, uh. Mimi and Sarah and I attended this piece of the board of selectmen's meeting on the sixth of April. Um. Where there was some. Oh, yes, Don Morris as well. That's correct. And Marnie was also there, um, for certain parts. And, uh, we did.
I was there too.
Oh, Andrew was there too. I'm sorry. That's why we had a forum, so to speak. Um, so I just want to also just refresh everybody's memory that we did get two, uh, legal opinions from town council regarding constructive approval being stricken. And that in both, he can, in the initially recommended, we strike the constructive approval. And in the second opinion, where we asked for additional feedback, he reiterated the importance of striking that for, um. Better operations for planning board approvals. Still having trouble, Sarah?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry. I, I don't.
Sorry, is that something I can, I can launch? I have it up right now, so I can call it. Yes. That's why I look, I look, keep looking up is because I'm reading it bigger on my screen.
Thanks.
Can you guys see this?
Just a little bit bigger. There we go. That's perfect. And we're on page, um. Page four is the next edit. In red, right there. So go ahead, Sarah. You can pick it up from here.
So, yeah, um. So we added, uh, you know.
This was a conflict with the lighting by law, right?
Right. So we took that out, um, because the, the new, you know, the lighting by law has a, that's a conflict there.
I don't think it was even in the current.
No, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah, so some of that's.
And then, um, Marnie, if you could just scroll down a little.
Can you not see it? I thought I'm showing the planning board.
Oh, maybe.
If you're having trouble, Sarah, I can just work through them quickly. I just didn't want to cut you off.
I'm sorry, I guess maybe there's a delay because, oh, now I can see it.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, you're slowing down when you.
Sorry, I don't know. I just, terrible connection tonight. I do apologize. Um, so, so, yeah, so here in section F, uh, we just changed, you know, the word inspector to, um, commissioner. Um, a complete application filed with the town clerk. Um, just again to add that level of detail and understanding. Um, and then here, uh, we. Put upon site plan approval, uh, applicant shall provide final plan set for planning board endorsement. Followed by a digital copy after, um, with the planning board signature. So they'll provide the, um, documents with the signature lines. And then once we get the signatures, it's the expectation that the proponent would give us back a PDF of those documents that have been signed.
And now my G. I don't know if your screen changed.
Not.
Maybe come off video because that sometimes consumes.
Okay, let's try that. All right, still seeing. Uh, now I can see G. Perfect. Um. And so here, again, we just wanted to clarify, um, the twenty day appeal period. So no action shall be taken, shall take effect until twenty days have lapsed after the decision has been filed. In the office of the town clerk and any appeals have been resolved. So just making sure that folks are aware of that twenty day, um, appeal period. And then we added, uh, yeah, the increase to, uh, site lighting levels in terms of, uh, you know, departures. Um, from the approved plan set. Um, and, you know, so that, that would be an opportunity or a necessity for, uh, the proponent to come back to the planning board. That's it.
Yep, that's it.
So, uh, this is the latest draft. And unless we change something tonight. This is what you will submit to the town administrator tomorrow morning.
Correct. Correct, we take off the colors and.
For printing and, um, formatting to match the town warrant.
Correct.
And the public should know, and I think everyone does, that, um, this is what will be printed, but. It's always subject to amendments. At the town meeting, uh, at, at the town meeting, during the town meeting.
And it's my understanding, Tom, that the public hearing for this will remain open until the town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it, it gives us the maximum, us and the public, the maximum opportunity to continue to look at it and, uh. And think of, uh, ways to approve it or improve, improve it. Or, um, or make some changes. So, uh, yeah, well, that's our intent unless the board decides otherwise. We would keep this and the other public hearings. For warrant articles open until, uh, right before the meeting, the town meeting. Any questions?
Yeah, to make sure that this is the document you want submitted tomorrow.
Right.
For printing.
Yep. Well, we've been working on this thing for over a year. And, um, you know, it's, it's been refined right up until today, so. There may be further refinements, but it's time to, um. It's time to submit it.
And that may not be the proper article number because the articles of numbers have shifted slightly. So just be aware, article thirty-nine, it may be thirty-eight or thirty-seven. It's actually article thirty-seven in the current draft of the warrant.
Uh, hey, Karina?
Yes.
There's a question, uh, under section, uh, under J compliance on the last page. Right above summary, there's like a semicolon and it says to do or act anything in relation there too.
Yes.
What's that?
That's standard warrant article. Language that, um. Is put in on every warrant article as a formality.
The re- the reason it allows you to change it on the floor, because I learned from my own experience. I didn't submit that line on some citizens petitions that I submitted and it couldn't be changed.
Thank you.
Allows.
Anything in the article, right? Yeah. Thanks, Marnie. Yeah, that's the answer.
I do have a question, Chairman Morris.
Yes.
Um, so just for a point of clarity, what we provide to, for the warrant is actually the clean version. Correct, but we keep this, the. But we keep the strikeout and the colored for handouts?
And presentation.
And presentations.
Well, in the warrant, it will show the strikeout and the bold. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah. So I guess that was my question. Do we want the warrant to show the clean language or all of the strikeouts in bold? Or do you want to do the handout of the strikeouts in bold and colors? And then in the warrant, we submit a clean article that has no strikeouts in it.
So my understanding is that this is the format that the Board of Selectmen require it to be. And, yeah, that, that is, that was our instruction last year. And so, you know, that, that was how, how it's been submitted in drafts for this year. And that was like, again, a special request, you know, to, for it to be printed that way.
So then we will provide clean and the warrant will be this version.
Yes.
Except without the colors.
Right. So like the, the, that's the colored text will be bolded because those will be insertions. And then, you know, everything else will remain the same.
This current document is actually, I think it's formatted to match the code formatting already. You know, when we first did the drafts, they were not aligned with the right spacing and, you know, the right indent and all that. This particular one is aligned and ready to go. Once we get rid of the colors.
So just to, in case, in case it's asked, maybe we should entertain a motion to forward this latest draft to the town administrator tomorrow.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded to forward this draft to the town administrator with the intention of having it printed in, in the warrant. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just wondering, was there anyone from the public had comments before we submitted to the town?
We have 11 attendees at the moment and no one has their hands raised.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am going to leave my camera off just because I am getting a better reception and capacity for sharing with it off. So just wanted to let everyone know. Sorry about that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any more discussion? Any, anything? All in favor, Morris? Yes. Oh, go ahead, Mimi.
I just wanted to mention that the, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting last Tuesday, that there were those on the board that felt that the constructive approval should remain in the site plan by law. And even though town council has advised us to remove it. So I will, I've started looking at other towns and how they handle it and I will continue to do that. And when I have an adequate sample size, I will share my findings with the board.
Excellent. An excellent work on this. Thank you. All in favor, Morris? Yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, and I think on this, the town planner will most likely send each of us an email confirming that it's been submitted and keep us advised of any questions or comments on its pathway to being printed. Okay, next item on the agenda is, Mr. Mills.
Want to make a motion to continue the public hearing for annual town meeting article, amend section 174-10 site plan approval for April 26, 2021 at 7:05 PM.
Second.
You can tell I'm rusty after missing a meeting. Andrew was sharp, as always. Motion's been made and seconded to continue the public hearing. Any discussion? Anyone from the public?
Can I just say, do we want to adjust the timeframe because we don't have a public hearing with the subdivision anymore?
His time was 7:05, Karina.
Oh, it was? Oh, sorry. I thought I heard 25. Okay. Sorry. I only have one side working.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion to continue the public hearing? All in favor, Morris? Yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, if it's all right with Mr. Mills, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Public hearing. This is a continued public hearing for town meeting warrant article, amend section 174-9 special permit requirements and 174-19 extensions or alterations. Well, this is continued from February 22nd, March 8th, and March 29th. Ask the town planner to give us an update on this draft warrant article.
All right, since the last public hearing on March 29th, again, Mullins' forms were submitted by Don Morris and Jesse Stein for not attending that meeting, indicating that they reviewed that meeting to stay up to date and be informed, which allows them to continue to deliberate and take action on this warrant article. If we have not yet today, we will let Katie Barry know. She's the admin for the zoning board of appeals and just let her know that this draft by law that the zoning board of appeals has presented to remind her to make sure that it's going to go to the printer and that she needs to get it to the town administrator, Board of Selectmen's office.
I did send her an email this evening, so.
Okay, good. Actually, I didn't know you were there. Okay, super.
I'm here.
Other than that, we haven't received any other comments or feedback on this warrant article.
Very good. Good job, Sarah. Keeping the team reminded and advised so things don't slip through the crack. So any other questions or comments relative to this draft warrant article? If not, we could entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
So move.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded to continue the public hearing to what date?
April 12th. I'm sorry, April 12th. April 26th.
At 7:15?
7:10.
At 7:10.
That's the motion? It's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor, Morris? Yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a draft warrant article for, to amend update section 174-12.1 Outdoor Illumination. This is continued from February 22nd, March 8th, and March 29th. We will ask the town planner to take the next step and update or pass it on to Marnie to update.
I just want to mention the Mullins' forms again, that again, Don Morris and Jesse Stein provided and we filed the Mullins' forms indicating that they reviewed the information from the planning board public hearing on March 29th. This, this warrant article was also a subjective review at the Board of Selectmen's meeting last week on April 6th, in which I believe Marnie spoke to that article.
Thanks, Karina. Yes, I spoke to it. Sarah and Dustin were in attendance with me. I think what I wanted to try and do is just explain that we had, after our discussion at the planning board on March 8th, we had gone through regarding enforcement and we had taken out the language that the onus would be on the property owner and instead on the complainant. So there's quite a bit of discussion at Board of Selectmen around enforcement. What I find interesting is there's eight pages of really interesting stuff on lighting and that's really all they focused on. And they're very perplexed because they think that it will be a very large increase in residents, calling out residents. Because there's a, I would, I think there's a subtle undercurrent that there's a belief that we're changing the bylaw that this bylaw is now newly applicable to single and to family dwellings. And in fact, all of our bylaws and the zoning bylaws are applicable to single and family, to family dwellings. And I think it's important that we clarify that language in this section B applicability by, because we received town council advice to be a little more clear about that, so it isn't subject to confusion. And then what we also did was we talked about at the Board of Selectmen, the enforcement criteria. And in this enforcement criteria, this is new in the zoning by law. And it's bolded to show that it's new. And basically, it says that this enforcement is, shall, the burden shall be on demonstrating these existent complies with the standards established by the bylaw. And it should be imposed or enforcement by the building commissioner. And so what we did is we just referenced section 174-24, which is already in our zoning bylaws. And it says nothing's different. Enforcement happens. One thing that we weren't able to do between last week and this week is to clarify the process. And I think that, under consideration, Sarah advised the team that it really is something we should get a collaborative perspective on and that this team shouldn't just create a process, considering we wouldn't be the ones to follow it. That it would be very important to have some collaboration on that. So the process would be something that we still need to work on between now and town meeting. This town by law per se would not change. And the rules and regulations, which is an accompanying handbook that would go with the lighting laws, and it's a lot of technical specifications in the rules and regulations would be the criteria associated with the process in which Sarah, myself, and Destin would try to collaborate with some of the other boards that, and building commissioner, people who are affected by this by law. So they have a point of view and can influence the process that we had put into the rules and regulations. And let me know if I caught everything, Sarah.
That was perfect. I, I, thank you, Marnie. That was a great update.
We're having fun with lighting all the time. I know you're all very jealous. Really excited to make sure town meeting passes this. So we will work, you know, collaboratively with our other, with our other town boards and.
It's an interesting update because it's so technical and it's in an industry that's changing. And you guys have your arms completely around it. And the high-tech stuff is in there. And then the simple thing about how do you make a complaint? How do you resolve it? Is something we're still working on. But seems like on the right path. So is it the board's desire to forward this language to the town administrator tomorrow? If so, then we would entertain a motion to forward these, how many pages is it?
Eight.
These eight pages of draft warrant article to the town administrator tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We forward these draft eight pages to the town administrator tomorrow for the lighting by law, by law change.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Any comments from the public?
I do not see any hands raised at this time. We have 11 attendees.
Seeing no comments, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, Morris? Yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mills.
Make a motion. We continue the public hearing for annual town meeting warrant article update section 174-12 dot 1 Outdoor Illumination to April 26, 2021 at 7:20 PM.
Seconded.
I was testing you, Mr. Mills. Motion's been made and seconded to continue the public hearing. Any questions or comments? Hearing that all in favor, Morris? Yes.
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes. And this is the most fun I've had in a planning board meeting ever.
Should have been on the board back in the 80s and 90s. Oh, boy. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for town meeting warrant article, create section 174-8.4.1 Downtown District. This is continued from February 22nd, March 8th and March 29th. We'll ask the town planner to give us an update. I believe since March 29th, there's been several pieces of correspondence and meetings.
Okay, again, Mullins' forms for Jesse Stein and Don Morris were signed and filed with the town clerk, indicating that for the missed meeting on March 29th, that they've reviewed the information so that they can continue to deliberate and act on this public hearing. All right, so on March 30th, the Board of Selectmen held a public forum, the second one, regarding this downtown district proposed by law. And on April 5th, I just want to point out that we received a letter that was sent to the Board of Selectmen, to the Planning Department, from Ray Hokinson, expressing opposition to the proposed warrant article. Then on April 6th, the Board of Selectmen held a meeting and the planning board had a joint meeting agenda posted also to discuss the downtown district, which I spoke to at that meeting. There has been an updated guidance document from the Executive Office of Housing and Community Development regarding, it's for local officials on determining voting thresholds for zoning ordinance and bylaws that came from the Housing Choice Bill, which makes certain zoning changes or ordinances or bylaws able to have a simple majority if they meet certain criteria, such as including mixed use or multifamily housing as a right in an eligible location. So there are terms here, such as eligible location, that refer, for example, you're within a half a mile of a train station or bus terminal. Or you are in a downtown area, a rural village district, something like that. That's seeking to have that type of mixed use with multifamily housing. Again, it applies to zoning bylaws and ordinances and amendments. So a couple of things I just want to point out out of that is that you're not supposed to co-mingle simple majority voting and two-thirds super majority voting into one warrant article. If there's confusion with that, or it happens to be, it would default to a two-thirds super majority. And the intent of that zoning act change was to enhance the ability. the intent of that zoning act change was to enhance the ability for multifamily housing and mixed use uses to happen with a simple majority. So that's kind of the gist of it. Those documents have been distributed to the Planning Board members to review this some frequently asked questions. So we also, on April 6th, I sent an email to the town administrator as well as members of the Board of Selectmen, the Chair, John Wood of the EDC, Julie Connolly, who's been representing this warrant article at the Planning Board Public Hearings, Ma'Reika Mansif, the EDC Coordinator. And in it, I expressed six areas that are very important and need to be addressed as part of the proposed bylaw amendment that the Board of Selectmen for the EDC is bringing forth. If anyone has any question about those, that was also followed by, I believe, Sarah and Mimi attended the EDC meeting last Friday, April 9th, where a discussion ensued regarding this warrant article with the EDC. And Sarah followed that with an email as well, Friday late morning, also shedding some additional thoughts on some of the conflicts and areas of concern that the Planning Board has been having in discussions for this warrant article. You know, for an example, you know, the 3,000 square foot per establishment criteria for special permit versus the 2,000 square foot floor area in a major site plan approval. It seems to be a gap there between those two thresholds. There, in addition, the zoning map that needs to be addressed, we believe as part of the warrant article language, if they're changing, proposing to change a district, whether it's leaving the same boundaries as the prior district, but if you're renaming it, it should be, you have to vote that as well to change the zoning map, to rename that district. So we haven't received any feedback since the last public hearing. We don't have an updated version as of yet. So we're still going by the the last document that was supplied to us that was dated March 9. Sarah, did I miss anything? No, that, that I think.
I think that covers everything.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you for that. As we can hear, there's been action activities since our last meeting. And I think if I, if I did this right, there are nine areas that are, seem to be open ended that need resolution. Number one is what is the newest one, which is the information from the state relative to simple majority and two thirds. That's the first one. And then, Karina, you said that you had sent an email to the Selectmen identifying six areas of concern.
Yes.
So that's six plus, the first one is seven. And then Sarah's email that identified two more areas, which is the 2,000 versus 3,000 square feet. That's number eight. And then number nine would be the zoning map, which either is left alone as far as its boundaries. But with the, the, the name change or adding or subtracting. And that's number, that's number nine.
I just want to point out that some of those overlap.
Okay. So how many, I, I just want to. What?
You want one itemized?
Yeah, just like I, I just went through, but we're starting to get close to the finish line here. And we've been around enough to, to see warrant articles that don't have any open items. There may be some discussion items. And they sometimes prevail at town meeting and sometimes they, they don't because of one or two areas of discussion or what appears to be open ended or something unresolved. This is quite a list and some of them are significant. They're, in my opinion, they could be showstoppers. They could be you know, reasons to have the article pulled or voted down. So can you, I just want to, if we're at this point, and since our last meeting, there's been three, three documents that seem to capture the, the major items that we're concerned with. The, the one, the, the document from the state, your email and Sarah's email. So uh, so there's, there's less than nine because some of the six, so just go over the six that you put in, just briefly, not, not a lot of detail, but just to identify.
Sure. So number one was the question on the voting thresholds.
Okay.
Okay.
We got that, yep.
Number two is the co-mingling of language in a warrant article of things that require a simple majority versus things that require a super majority, two thirds vote. You're not supposed to co-mingle them and we're not sure if something's being co-mingled yet or not.
Okay, that's number two.
Number three, addressing any change that the downtown district will impact on the zoning map needs to be addressed.
Map, number three, okay?
Yep. Number four, it's my understanding that there may be a conflict between the special permit for multifamily dwellings in the proposed bylaw and the major residential development of eight or more lots or dwelling units. So there's a potential conflict with the MRD, Major Residential Development.
Okay, what's that, number four?
That's number four. Number five is the question on maximum lot coverage. Still says 80%. I think there was issue with that.
That's five.
Number six, the remaining question regarding the conflict of the 2,000 square foot threshold for major site plan and the proposed downtown district language of the special permit threshold language of 3,000 square feet per establishment.
That's number six.
Okay. The term establishment and clarity on that. It's referenced, I believe, in the signed bylaw that we currently have. And reference to that should be clarified if it's the same, if it's different. So there's no confusion when someone applies. What does establishment mean?
That's seven.
I think Sarah, your second one was already included and the other one, um, the idea of eligible location should be clarified. So if the bylaw.
That's back to the state, the state.
The state document, yeah. And I think, I think those are the major, at this time, at this point in time, those are the, I, the, the areas of concern.
Sarah, then, then Mimi?
Yes, thank you. So I think just to, you know, piggyback, and I think it's kind of like a, a sub bullet, maybe under establishment. You know, currently, the, this language talks about establishment and references a square footage threshold. And so if we're talking establishment, you know, per business and looking at those businesses individually within the same unit, you know, building and such, then you can actually have, you know, a much larger building that doesn't trigger that site plan approval, which is in conflict with the current bylaw that triggers site plan approval at 2,000 square feet.
Andrew? Oh, Mimi.
And the mixed use is still not clarified to me, although the definition has been tinkered around with. It still says mixed use provided that each use of the, the development is under these two sections, which don't have a residential use. And then on the next page, under special permits, it says multifamily dwellings up to 12 units. So it's, it's unclear to me that whether, and I think the purpose is that mixed use is by right, but it's not clear. It's still ambiguous to me.
Well, the reason I wanted to go through this is so that we can you know, clearly define those concerns of ours that we consider to be open. And we can find them in one place. So we have those three documents. And maybe in tonight's minutes or as a separate document, we could have each of those items listed in one place. And forward that on to the EDC and the Selectmen. So that and there may be other concerns from the public, the neighbors, other boards, but those would be ours. And doing this in an attempt to breathe life, continued life into this article, I think we've consistently heard from people that have neighbors, other board members that they're interested in making some changes downtown. But we want to make sure that we do them right and we're able to enforce them. That's the direction I think we're coming in. Like anybody's really opposed to improving the downtown with, with zoning or other things, but it's got to be something that can be understood and enforced. Was there anything else? Anyone else wanted to comment or make questions, have questions?
One point.
Yeah?
In the state document, there's recommendation that town council be I forget the term, you, you ask town council about the voting thresholds when the time comes because it has to be clear from an application, from an applicant standpoint to the Planning Board when they do a report to town meeting. It should be clear what the voting threshold is for what parts of whatever your bylaw is changed when it comes to this zoning act update for encouraging multifamily housing and mixed use development. So you know, time is short. If, if the Board of Selectmen ask town council for an opinion on this, or if we do, we would just need to know pretty quickly so we can get an illegal opinion. And this is super busy time for town council reviewing all the, the four.
Yeah, the timing by the state is certainly not, not very good relative to our, our schedule, but again, as I said earlier, any one of these or a combination of these could, could be a showstopper for moving this, this article forward. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll ask Mr. Mills to make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Uh, make a motion. We continue the public hearing for creation section 174-8 dot four dot one downtown district.
There is a hand raised.
We did, we had a late, late hand raised.
Just before Andy started talking, Kevin Miller raised his hand.
Okay. I was going to ask for questions from the, the, the public after we had a second on the motion, but we can hold off on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. I, I was, I was sorry to be slow in raising my hand. I, I wasn't clear whether you were taking public comment or moving on. If you want to take your vote first, I'm, I'm happy to wait.
No, no. It's good to have other people do a better job of running this meeting than me tonight. So, yes.
That won't be me. That won't be me, I assure you. But I, I just, first I, I'll try to be brief. I, I want to thank you, Mr. Morris, and the board for the, the very, very thoughtful and thorough sort of elucidation of, of the, the issues that are still open ended with regard to this initiative. But, you know, as has been stated, are really highly problematic. I, I'm, one thing I'd like to ask is sort of a point of clarification, ju-just so I understand how you intend to go forward. Whether or not the Planning Board is going to be meeting again, taking this issue up and at some point taking a vote prior to town meeting, whether or not you know, this is an initiative that, that you want to support or withhold support from, because I'm very unclear. And again, I'm, I'm a, I'm a, a citizen and a voter. And, and not to congratulate myself in any way, but I think I've spent more time in this in the last several months than, than or at least as much time as anybody in town who's not on some board or commission. And I am baffled and puzzled. And I, I, I go from commission or committee to board, to committee to board, chasing this like a kind of overactive puppy chasing a shuttlecock in a badminton game as it gets batted back and forth over my head. And I'm just trying to keep up and figure out you know, when various boards, you know, the advisory committee has taken the position that they're not going to take a position prior to town meeting, which, you know, I find from an advisory committee kind of disappointing. So I, I just want to understand what the process is and the thinking is. And I'm not expecting you to, you know, I'm not trying to hold anybody to anything. I'm just trying to understand how you, you plan to go forward. And I, I appreciate that I'm asking a difficult question. But I, I'm, I'm looking for some guidance, you know, from, from a group of people that I, I respect and appreciate in terms of the way you've conducted review of this matter until this point.
Okay, thank you. That, that's an excellent question. And we usually try to explain it eh, you know, generically relative to warrant articles. And that's, I think what you're seeing. This is the fifth, the fourth public hearing relative to town meeting articles uh, tonight and at our last meeting and going back into February and going forward, we continue, we open the public hearings and we continue them to allow maximum input from the neighbors and, and the general public. And to be able to take that information in a public hearing, if you close a public hearing, that blocks out any further information from being received. And so the Planning Board over the years has kept these public hearings open and learn from them so that right up until the day before or the day of, or a few days before the town meeting, the Planning Board will hold a, a meeting and can, and have that continued public hearing still open. Because sometimes at the last minute, things change and it could change the minds of the board members from support to non-support or the other way around. And so that's what I expect. I mean, the board can disagree and say, no, let's close the public hearing. We've had enough. Let's just move and we'll, we'll see what happens at, at the town meeting. But as the town planner has said, we're required to submit, the Planning Board is required to submit a report. And in, in that report would be would reflect, I guess, the position of the Planning Board and a formal vote prior to town meeting, whether to support or not. And, and over the years, we've had, you know, the report would say Planning Board has voted five to zero to support this article or five to zero to not support it and for the following reasons, or a split, a split vote that would then be, the, that would then be explained so the public would know. so the public would know why those who voted in favor did and why those who voted against did that. And that's, that's pretty much the process. Some people might say, well, you know, you're waiting until the last minute, so we don't know what, you know, what you, how you plan to proceed. But, and that's, that's probably one of the drawbacks. But I think we felt that it's the lesser of the evils is to keep the public hearing open and see how these can be improved right up to the last minute and still give the town meeting the benefit of our public meeting vote and our written report to the, is it to the selectmen or to the moderator? Karina? I guess it's to the town meeting.
It's to the town meeting.
Yeah. Did I answer your question, Mr. Miller?
I did, and I appreciate your, you know, keeping the door open to further consideration till as late as possible. I would just simply encourage you by saying that I think I would appreciate it, and I think everybody that pays attention will appreciate it if the planning board ultimately takes a position, whether it's in my favor or not. At least I'll know where people stand, and I think that's important. So I thank you. The only other thing I'd like to say, again, very quickly, is, you know, you listed out all these things that are problematic, and I agree with all of them. From the standpoint of somebody who's not elected or appointed here, to me, it boils down to some very simple things that are easier maybe for voters to understand about transparency in terms of what the objective of this whole project is. You know, again, as is well known, my primary area concern, since I think all further concerns take off from this point is the map. And whether or not the goal of this initiative is to revitalize Main Street, Newton, and Boston Road, or whether it's to open up potentially, potentially, a very large parcel for the goals of Shopsey and other, you know, boards in terms of mixed use and, you know, affordable housing and all that kind of stuff, but without disclosing that to the voters. That's the part that I find very problematic and a much more simple sort of philosophical question than some of the nitty-gritty about 2,000 square feet or 3,000 square feet or percentage of lot coverage. It's a question of what is the real goal of this initiative? You know, because it's very limited space along Main Street, but somehow there's an awful lot of concentration on this map question and proving, you know, the BOS is right now engaged in activity to try to show that the split lot owners are all in favor of this so they can declare victory without consulting the butters, which I think is really kind of deeply offensive, to be honest with you. I know that's not in your purview, but of course, you're going to be settled with the legacy of whether this initiative passes or not. So I know you're deeply concerned. And again, I appreciate the very, very thoughtful consideration of the issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone on the board want to add to what I said or subtract?
Oh, Mr. Morris, I'll add. I think, Mr. Miller, I think you asked last time about a vote. I don't recall a town meeting yet that we haven't taken a vote on a planning article that went before the town meeting. So, and I, as one member, would request that the board take a vote, especially on this one, before it goes. So I think, I think you, there will definitely be a vote at some point. But as you can see, there's still a number of things outstanding that we need to get resolved before we even want to move this forward, even, you know, the next phase. So I just want to reiterate to you that there will be a vote, I believe, from this board. That's my position.
Anyone else? Mrs. Latrell?
Um, I think although the board of selectmen is currently just reaching out to those landowners that have split lots, I think their intention is to reach out to the other butters afterwards. And I'm pretty sure if there are any changes to the zoning map that will require a public hearing, so it won't happen behind Clive's closed doors, so to speak. It would require a public hearing.
Anyone else?
Do not see any additional hands raised. We have eleven attendees.
Want to piggyback on what Mr. Mills said. We're elected, and we take that very seriously, we answer to you, the people. And you expect us to vote. You expect us to make decisions, whether they're popular or not. And I think the board has a long history of doing exactly what Mr. Mills said. We always take a vote. Sometimes it's a split vote, sometimes it's unanimous, but we always vote. You're entitled to that, and we understand that it's our responsibility to do that, and we will. Anything else?
Don't see any additional hands.
Mr. Chairman, I continue my motion that we continue the public hearing to create for annual town meeting, a warrant article, create section 174-8 dot 4 dot 1 downtown district to April 26, 2021 at 7:25.
Second? Motion's been made in second and any discussion? Hearing them all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item. Ilabella Estates will ask the town planner to bring us up to date on this. Oh, she left.
No, I'm here. I'm sorry, I have to, my desk is on my floor. Sorry.
I knew you were there.
Okay. All right. We received a request from Peter Bemis with engineering design, who was representing Jack Bartolini with Bartolini Builders at Ilabella Estates, which, as you know, is off of Mount Vickery Road, just west of Breakneck Hill Road. It's an 11-lot flexible development subdivision with one lot, number one, which will have a duplex of affordable units. Jack Bartolini is requesting release of four of those lots. A covenant is in place as required, as a surety for those, for subdivisions. Let me just grab my folder here. So it's my understanding that infrastructure and roadway work has been done to a certain extent. So when I received this request, Peter Bemis asked to be put on a planning board agenda, again, representing Jack Bartolini, to talk to the planning board about the process for releasing these lots. I don't know if you want me to continue as to how it typically transpires when someone asks for release of lots or not done? Or if you want to discuss it first?
No, why don't you take it to the next level?
Okay. So, as you recall, like with Chestnut Meadow subdivision, which was the last one that we had in Southborough, which was a 12-lot subdivision. When a covenant is in place, the builder proceeds to, so the plans get approved for subdivision. A covenant gets put in place to make sure that infrastructure and the roadway gets built. This is particularly important when you have a roadway that will become public later. So the developer will go forward and build as much of the roadway and the infrastructure as he can until he comes to a certain point where he wants to start selling the lots. And in order to do that, the town requires some form of bond to cover the cost of the remaining work so that, once the lots are released, if something happens to the developer's business or whatever, whatever the circumstance, that the town has a surety to finish those lots that are now out of the covenant, finish the infrastructure to, so the lots are accessible once they're released. So you don't want to release the lots without having some kind of a surety that everything is completed. So the bonding gets put in place to do that. Like I said, it's just like with Chestnut Meadow. And then as the project gets completed and the as-builts are submitted, it gets inspected by Fussin' O'Neill to confirm everything's done, and then the bonding gets reduced. And town council has previously recommended that at some point when the roadway gets accepted as a public road, that 10% of the bond is held back for one year after that point just to make sure everything functions the way it's supposed to. There's no sinkholes or whatever, issues with the pavement, et cetera. So typically, I would, at this point, if the planning board wants to, I would ask Fussin' O'Neill for an S, a fee, an estimated fee to do a bond estimate. So they would go out and inspect the current status of the subdivision and what has been completed and what has not. And then they come up with an estimated fee of those costs, including the cost of as-builts. That's then provided to the developer, who then agrees, disagrees. It gets mitigated to an acceptable amount that makes sense for both parties. And then he provides a bond for that, and then the lots can be released, ensuring that the rest of the work will be completed so that the people who have bought the lots have access to those lots. I don't know if that makes sense. If you have any questions, let me know. But it's very typical.
But, thank you. I think, I think everyone is understanding and agreeing to each of those steps. And correct me if I'm wrong, but based on the letter from Mr. Bemis, the bonding would happen after the planning board releases lots three, four, nine, and 10. At a, at a point in time where we also acknowledge and agree that in order to release any additional remaining lots from the covenant, we will post a performance bond. So, question is, do we release these four lots? And rely on if, for whatever reason, the remainder of the project is not completed by the developer, that the town would then take possession of the remaining lots and somehow accomplish the completion of the roadway and the infrastructure? Or do we require a bond to be posted before we release these four lots? I think that's what we're being asked. We're being asked to not have the bond until a point in time for release of any additional remaining lots.
I think if you read the covenant, it indicates that before release of the lots, any and all lots or areas subject to this covenant may be released from its operation by vote of the planning board, evidenced by a recordable certificate of performance, signed by the number, enumerating the lots, so released upon complete construction of ways and installation of services and other improvements. I think the covenant implies that, you know, you need evidence, you need something that says what still needs to be completed there. And that is.
Right, but not only that, but there has to be sufficient of funds available in case a developer goes away for the town to get itself or someone else through that funding to complete the roads and the infrastructure.
Yes, and that's actually stated in number three of the covenant, which says the planning board may release any lot or area from the operation of this covenant by a written and recordable instrument upon the provision of other security sufficient, in the board's opinion, for the construction of ways and installation of services and other improvements to provide access and services to such lots. So that's included in the covenant for that purpose.
But is that in conflict with this sentence? We also acknowledge and agree that in order to release any additional remaining lots from the covenant, we will post a performance with, with the board.
Yeah, what I believe the applicant is, what, what Jack is asking for is to not ask for a bond, but to release the lots and then get a bond for the remaining lots, which is in conflict with the covenant requirements. I'm no lawyer, but I think that's what it reads, and that's what I've experienced here. And I, just so you're aware, that Jack Bartolini and Peter Bemis and Gregory Bartolini and Michael Bartolini are in the attendees. Jack has his hand raised for later.
I want to make sure it's clear what we're being asked. I'll open it up to the board. If you have any questions or a different understanding of what we're being asked tonight. Mr. Mills?
I'm going to recuse myself on this one.
Okay. Mr. Stein?
I'd like to hear from the opponent.
Mrs. Latrell?
Um, so just to reiterate, in the past, the way it's done is that prior to the release of any lot, Fussin' O'Neill goes out and inspects and then comes up with a bond amount, and then the lots are released?
Once a bond is in place to cover the remaining work, in case something happens to the developer's business or whatever, so that the town has repercussion.
And so Fussin' O'Neill confirms that the roads in place and that the services are in place? And is that?
Yes. How much is done?
Inspection is?
Mm-hmm. They go out and inspect what is done and what's not completed as far as the town right away, and its infrastructure and sidewalks and drainage that, that make it a functioning project and that the, that if you do sell the houses, that you're able to live in that house. Not that, you know, you don't have full service there with water, drainage, et cetera, septic.
Okay, thank you. No more question.
Mrs. Houlihan?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the proponents as well. This is new to me.
Karina, I'll go to Mr. Bemis or Mr. Bartolini, if that's okay.
Both gentlemen are all set to speak.
Peter Bemis here. So I did.
Good evening, Peter.
Yes, good evening. So I put this request in, in this manner. First of all, Bartolini Builders is the developer and the builder in this instance. So they develop lots for their own portfolio to develop. Three generations, some probably 60 years of building in town. So we're not asking for all the lots, we're asking for four of them. Fussin' O'Neill did inspect all the infrastructure and all the life safety systems are in place. So we've got water, gas, we've got hydrants that are online. We have all of our utility services to the lots. They picked these four. Um, we have all of our utility services to the lots, um, they picked these four, uh, the, the central lots in the development. And they're trying to do this basically out of pocket, so you would retain seven lots of which you would have full control. Which would be well in excess of probably a couple million dollars the way the market is today of land value. Uh, so that they can build on four of them now. Uh, to me, that's really the essence of what we've asked you for. Um, typically with some, a developer comes in, they're selling to a third party, in this instance, we're not. Uh, they are also, uh, asking you for all the lots and you post the money. To protect the town from the fact that they would default. Um, in our case, we're only asking you for four of them and you can continue to hold seven. Sorry, I'm not sure where that's coming from, but not from here. Um, so, you know, that's really the difference, I think, and that's the key difference here. Uh, we wouldn't have asked you for this if the infrastructure wasn't in place to support the, uh, the four lots, it clearly is. Uh, the lots are in position to, uh, to receive building permits. And, um, you would continue to hold the other, uh, lots and would give them as the opportunity to do, develop some revenue. That they could then use to put the money up to, uh, to support the remaining lots being released. So that, that's really what the request is. Thank you.
Can I just speak to one thing? Um, it is true that Fussin O'Neil did provide in, some inspections during construction. Um, but they have not had an inspection there since, uh, early two thousand eighteen. Um. I have the inspection reports here, but it wasn't with the, um, approach for, um, a bond estimate review. So they just estimated work that was completed at the time. Um, but it wa- it's not real, you know, it's not specifically for a bond estimate that says. The further work that has been done since their last inspection. Just, just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Well, um, I certainly, uh, any other, uh, comments from Jack or?
Someone has to help Jack on, on.
Jack, are you all set? Um, I've asked him on you, are you?
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
They're all set now.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, first off, the Bartolinis have been building in town for, uh, well seventy-five years, you, you, the third generation was before you earlier tonight. Um, and we've completed everything we've ever built and, uh. Uh, Dawn, you probably know this, but I, I don't know if the other members do, but it was on a, usually used to give partial releases. Um, on subdivisions, I've got them, I know that, uh, my father got them, I knew, uh. Boris Ankhazian and, and, uh, Dick McCarthy and, uh, you, you recognize these names, I know you do, Dawn. Um, so this is not something unique to the board, um, and Peter's not asking. Uh, uh, in my behalf for something that this board has never done before. And, uh, I believe that, uh, uh, you're not sticking your neck out very far, especially with another generation behind us if, if something should happen to me. Uh, but, uh, um, I, I, I'm not, I don't believe I'm putting the town in harm's way at all by, by asking for this request. That's all I really wanted to say.
Yeah, uh, to, uh, reinforce, Jack, you're right, I, I remember those days when, especially Sarkisian, uh. Was building, uh, the road. Up to a certain point. And started building houses. And just working his way leapfrogging up and, up the road, extending the road, building more houses, so on. And, um, it was difficult, I, I'll tell you, it was difficult for the board, but we got through it. And that, but that was a long time ago and, um, since then, and I, oh, and I also agree that, uh. You know, your family's got a long, um. You know, very excellent reputation of, uh, building, completing things. Um, and certainly wouldn't be concerned that you're, you're going to disappear and leave the town hanging. But thanks to the, uh. I guess pu- performance or lack thereof from other, uh. Developers. Certainly not as qualified as you and your family. But thanks to their efforts, um. You know, the board had to change, the board couldn't, wouldn't do that anymore. Um, and we were advised certainly by. I know Town Council and others. That, yeah, okay, there's a million dollars worth of land there, but the town's not in the business of dealing with land. Uh, to convert that into money, to convert that into finishing the project. The town's not in that business and we, we went through this years ago. And at one time, we not only, uh, demanded a bond, but we demanded a cash bond. Actual cash in.
I remember that, I've done that too.
Yeah, so I, I think we've moved, uh, back off of the cash bond, but. We can't, we, we, we have to treat everybody the same. So if we start, you know, third generation and then another developer comes in and says, well, I'm. You know, second generation, you know, where do we draw the line? Or, you know, I've never, I've never had a problem before. Um. You know, we, we.
I don't know, I think we're, we're kind of unique to Southboro, I just, uh, I know that you did with my father, Skyler Drive and Sarson Stone and, and you're right, Dawn, people built them. As they went, they didn't build a whole road at one time like we do now.
I, I, I would recommend to the board, um. I, I agree with everything you're saying, but it's, you know, we're in the, our, our, our job, our duty is to protect the town. Uh, nobody asks developers to take these risks as you do. Um, and hopefully you are able to get the reward at the end. But it's the town's job, it's our job to protect the town from, uh, what we had gone through in the past with other, the, the other developments and. It was a real mess and very difficult and very costly to the town to have, uh, have us go through this, uh. Legal steps to have the, have the, the projects finished. So, um, do, uh, complete total respect to you and your family. Um, I would, I would recommend that we, uh. Treat this as we have all, all the others in, in recent years. Have Fussin O'Neil come out, um, and, uh. You know, develop a, a list and a value and have, have you bond that, uh, before we release the lots. I'll open it up to the board. I, you know, I'm just one vote, but I, that would be my respectful, uh, recommendation. Mr. Stein?
Yeah, I, I have to agree with the chairman that we really need to be consistent and fair. And, um, I think that it's appropriate to have, uh, Fussin O'Neil evaluate, uh, the work completed and take it from there.
Mrs. Latrell?
Um, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, we have a, a covenant, a signed covenant, which is a legal document and. Um, I think we need to be consistent and stand by our, our vote or the vote of the board at the time.
Mrs. Holahan?
Um, thank you, Chairman Morris. Um, Jack, I appreciate your history in town and, um, I. Um, understand your opinion, I would defer to the experience, um, on the board. Uh, in front of me, um, with, uh, Mr. Stein, Ms. Latrell and Mr. Morris and their experience and I agree that. Given the fact that there's a signed legal covenant, we should, um, be obligated by that and, uh, I would defer to the, uh, inspection as well.
So there, there you have it, uh, we're, um. The board is not.
I, I, I just thought that the, the covenant had room in it, as you say, you, you pointed out to the, the, uh, the sentence that, uh. Shows that you could do it, could do it this way, but. It certainly would help me, but.
Can I add one last thing? Um, I just wanted to let Jack know that, um, you should follow up with me tomorrow because we have an existing escrow account from Isabella with some funds in it.
You have some of my money?
Yes, for, and specifically for inspections like this, so there may be an opportunity here and I'll, I just want to verify that for sure. But in, there, there's a chance there that that is, um, available for this, um, bond estimate review.
I don't know if Peter's got anything else to say, uh, or any other different ideas. It's kind of hard talking here, we're all in different places, but.
Yeah, we'll work with Fussin O'Neil to develop a, a budget for this, it's just, it just when doing so, then we'll ask for the release of the, I know, eleven lots and. And go from there, so I, I, I get it, I just saw, saw this as being a way of doing it administratively and I understand your, your dilemma with it. So, thank you for the opportunity to discuss it.
Thank, thank you for, uh, our, our opportunity to discuss it and, um. You know, move, move along quickly with this and, um. Hopefully, this, this subdivision's been around a long time and, um, it's good to see that we're at this point moving forward. Okay, thank you.
All right, all right, thank you.
Okay, good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board. Uh, planners report, warrant article scheduled, project updates.
Yeah, just real quickly, I'm going to run through these because it's just important that you know, um, uh. Mooney Ball Field Lights and Neri Tennis Court Lights, um, they were, a contractor was awarded, uh, the construction contract. And they're in the process of scheduling pre-construction meetings, including the planning department, so that we can stay on top, um. Of, uh, the approval conditions as part of the decisions. Um. Uh, Sarah and I are working on investigating, um, a couple of properties that there were some infringements close to Route Nine. Um, with some of the product displays getting a little too close to Route Nine, so we're investigating that. Um, an email was sent to the building commissioner asking for her assistance as well to determine if there's any compliance issues there and then we'll report back to the planning board. On that. Uh, the accelerate bridges from Mast D O T are well underway, you see that, um, happening now on, um. The streets when you pass under them, um, you can go to the Mast D O T website and there's information on those if you look under, um, Exceler dash eight, uh, bridge projects. Um. You're aware of the political calendar, Mimi is, um. Vying for the planning board chair, I mean, the planning board seat, not the chair, sorry, Dawn, didn't mean to say that. Um, and there are deadlines for that, um. Listed on the town clerk's page. Um, again, um, Westboro has a big project happening at forty-four hundred Computer Drive, we got a, a notice for, um. Uh, permitting that they're going, that they're applying for there. Uh, last thing here, a new IT director should be on board April twentieth. Um. And that's it.
I have a few questions. Did they give you a timeline on when the lights might be turned on on those fields?
Uh, not yet.
Will it be this year, do you think?
I think so. They're starting pretty early in the construction season, so it's my guess that, um. You know, the, the, the infrastructure work there isn't extensive, it's, it's the raising of the posts and getting light fixtures on and Musco. Uh, who's the supplier of those is, is well versed in doing that, so I'm thinking they'll be ready maybe by late summer. Not sooner, but that's just my guess.
Second item was about, uh, encroachments on Route Nine and you and Sarah, um. Taking a look at that, sharing that information with the building inspector. I think we should, uh, well, it's up to the board to agree or think it's not a good idea, but it would seem to me that. Um, we have to make sure we stay within our jurisdiction. So if there's a site plan approval that limits, uh, where things can be placed relative to the, the front lot line or the side lot lines. Then I guess we're in our, within our jurisdiction to go out and check on those things using planning department staff and resources. Um, and then I guess reporting that up to the enforcement officer. But I think we should be sharing this information with the selectmen because at some point, um. Or, or maybe we're already at that point or beyond that point where the resources in the, uh. Zoning inspectors office are so limited that they're unable to do these inspections. And then it, i- if we don't do them, then it turns into a free-for-all. And the selectmen should be aware of that. And perhaps, uh, as a team or individually, you know, provide the necessary res- resources. To accomplish this compliance. Otherwise, we're all just wasting our time writing all these conditions and then the, the people just go do whatever they want and nobody does anything about it. So it's, it's a, it's a building, not as in a structure, but it's a, it's a developing, uh, problem. And of course, those who are in compliance, they look across the street, they look across the yard and they see their neighbor. Uh, not complying with their site plan, so why should I do it? Why should, why can't I just go and do what I want? And the whole thing gets out of control. So I, I would suggest that we just share this, uh, these concerns and our progress toward addressing them. With the selectmen's office and the public. Appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay, we'll do that. And I forgot one last thing be- before you continue your questions, um, the board of selectmen. Um, sign the Arbor Day proclamation for, um, South Road to be April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, that's a Friday, it aligns itself with Arbor Day. Um. Date for the, um, country, so, um, that's good news, that's progress towards Tree City, USA, twenty twenty-one.
I saw that, all the selectmen signed it, it's excellent, excellent, yeah. Uh, nothing else on that, anything else on those updates? Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, March fourth. Uh, twenty twenty-one, March eighth and March twenty-ninth. Did you want to do the March fourth one first? Although.
Yes, and that's for format only, not for release, that's the executive session, so, um, just simply a vote, um, to. Um. Approve the format, what's written there, not for release to the public yet because this is still pending.
Well.
A segment for discussion.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion, Mr. Stein?
Yeah, the only issue is I haven't reviewed that, those specific minutes, I've reviewed March eighth and March twenty-ninth. But I haven't reviewed the executive session minutes, so I'm going to abstain.
Let's, uh, let's bump those to the twenty-sixth, there's no, those aren't on fire, right? Or are we in trouble with those?
No, we're okay for that.
Executive sessions can, can extend. So let's go on to the. Thank you, Jesse. Let's go on to.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from March eighth, two thousand twenty-one, as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and for the, um, March eighth, uh, meeting minutes, any discussion? Hearing none all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, next meeting minutes, I was not at that meeting, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Mills.
Make a motion, we approve the, uh, meeting minutes from March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one, as written.
Uh, I'm going to abstain, yep, thank you.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, Mills, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes. Well done, Kate.
Excellent. Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Okay, uh, any other questions, comments from the public? Like I said, the complaint part of the, uh, uh, open discussion is long past, this would just be for compliments and, um. Improvements. Oh, not hearing any, okay, um, Mr. Mills?
A motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion? Hearing none all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, we're adjourned. Kate, excellent, nine pages, nine pages of, uh, minutes.